Hi my brother! This game uses money. And this game can also make money for you. Use your money wisely. And remember, this game is for entertainment, not for your main job to make money.
So what do you have here? We have 286 total winners in W top winner board around edge of the winnings. Where am I from? Oh come on, I think you know where I'm from. I think you know where I'm from. Give it a guess, give it a guess. I think you know where I'm from. That's a close, good luck to you. US? No! No! In Europe. In Europe. England now. Oh 5X for number one please. Hello! Hello, welcome everybody. Number one, Monster Mash! It really is a Monster Mash! Isn't it? Let's go. Uh, let's update everything with the beautiful 5X over here, right? Beautiful, beautiful! And now, let's go. 250 for the legs. 40 for the torso, oh come on! And a 100 for the pace car making that taller. Beautiful! 300 X for Monster Mash! Goals, go! Oilers are probably gonna choke again in the finals. You gave me the stats, so uh... Chance started at Canadian NHL team with win are very small. Leave is here ladies and gentlemen, I've got one to one. 470 now winners. Barry, Richard, Eichholz, Tom, Larry, and Jonathan. Well then, let's go again? And they got Chance. Uh, I guess we'll find out soon enough, won't we? Also, um, isn't today playing Sweden against Canada? Aren't they playing right now? Like didn't they just start for like an hour, one hour ago? Uh, 20X on Monster Mash. How are they doing? What's the score? Do you know? Please go, go. Stop now, stop, stop! Let's go! Ladies and gentlemen, we got that Monster Mash! Segment 11 with 20X! Wheel multiplier! Y'all hearing this? This is my song! This is my jam! Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Monster Mash! With 20X on multiplier, may I add? So let's add that first. I wanna see all of it. Alright, you ready? Good luck, let's see what you got. So what we got? 60 for legs, 80 for butt, come on! Do something! Yay! 80 for the head. Yay, 220! X on Monster Mash! So sorry everybody, 400 on four winners. Oli, Eva. And I'm Mere. Top three. Yeah, let's go again. You're not so possibilities, come on! I need to, I need to go into meditational type of aura so I can run the cow up fast to spin it. Usually I just hit my broken finger. I randomly cut it like one time, couple days ago. I bought a new knife and I did not have a knife to open that knife with because it was like very nicely packaged in plastic. So I took like a knife, opening up my new knife. You feel me? Alright, that's 15. Segment, battery charger, 2X wheel multiplier. Alright, let's apply the 2X here. A little bit of more money. At 200 is the maximum. Okay. That would have been not that great together. Well, I'm gonna be sticking Stevie's stand. Go away, go away. Okay, 80 would be decent, honestly I would take 80. Okay, it's not gonna be 80 ladies and gentlemen, okay? So the rest is gonna be pretty scary, not gonna lie. We shall double it up one more time! That's good! Move, 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 okay? Honestly, the vibe. Yes, let's go, one more. Nah, two more, a few more. Not this one, not this one, go away. One more, move, move, move. And it shall be a 400! Congratulations! Well, that's what I call success there. Congratulations everybody! Happy for you, happy for you! Decent, more than decent! And you were. I was not expecting that, I was scared for my life, but we did it! We did it guys! Alright, that was nice. Finally. Finally, good things.
Well, there are a fair amount of reds there. But, lines on blue. That is... 30X. Hi, congratulations to the players that won. Fireball today is... More like an ice ball. Congratulations! To all the players that won. Happy birthday! Yeah, happy birthday best friend. In the top we have... Nuck, Gus, and Lucky Man. Well, let's go. Water ball? Yeah, fire and water, I guess. Yeah, you're right, water ball, not ice ball. Why would be opposite of ice though? Fire, water, ice? Steam, maybe? 5X. On battery charger. I guess steam, right? Because ice would be solid water form, steam would be, well... I don't know how to call that form. Another fireball! Incredible! Segment number 19 fireball. Ladies and gentlemen, let's go. Three in a row. Let me show. Kind of hopes we got. 500X the highest. Bam, there we go. Yes baby! Who said go home? Who said it? Chadmon, Bannam? We gotta wait a little bit. 500X! Good job! It took us only three fireballs in a row to get that 500. Nicely done. Awesome. Let's see how many won. 1137, Gus B, and...
We're just sharing the pain, you know? Six feet tall and super strong! 4X and a body charger 5X, who's body? On a body charger 5X and a Monster Mash? No, you're sharing with me, yes! You know? Pain and uh... Happiness, we're gonna share it together like to each other. It's a leaf on a wheel between 13 and 14, you know? That's like how it works. Congratulations! Don't trick me! Don't, don't you... Oh! Congratulations and enjoy what's next, beautiful ladies! See ya! Enjoy, beautiful lady! Hello, welcome everybody, my name's Annie and I'll be hosting session. Hello! How was your previous session with the pretty lady? Yeah, that's a close, good luck to you. Oh, so happy to be here, haven't been here in such a long time! You hope I'm as great as the previous host? Let's see. That'd be my dream, to be someone so fabulous. 7X on 15. Let's see. Stop it right there young man! Are you seeing this? Are you seeing this? Hello! Number 15, fireball with the 7X, come on! Oh my, oh my! Welcome to fireball everybody! Let's add that 7X to everything, beautiful. Now, the highest multiplier is 3500X. What was that? Of course it was something red! And that is going to be... 350X! Alright, we're taking that, we are taking that! Nice! Look at that! Great start everybody! Amazing, congratulations! 880 for the winners. And uh, WMK. And uh, now who?
Guys, I'm spinning! That's a leaf segment. That's a leaf segment guys. Leaf segments there, good luck and enjoy. Here it is, 503 winners. Next spin, good luck! And here we go everybody, let's take a look. And see what we got on this one. Alright everybody, let's take a look and check it out. Okay. Let's check out this spin. 15X on 17. Good luck. 3X on 14! Let's go! 15 fireball, 3X. Fireball multiplied and lightning storm multiplied tend to be pretty good. I don't wanna get your hopes up. We're poggers bingo. Poggers, 1000 fireball X max. This is it, this is it, come on! Stay right there, stay right there, stay right there. We will accept this multiplier as valid. Thank you very much. We will accept this 300X as a valid result. We like 300X, right guys? We like that! We're 300X enjoyers on fireball. Benj of World!
Alejandro! Whoa, whoa, whoa! Spreading my name like this? Battery plates. Please? Look at this! We got it? We got 5X! 2000, I have this. 2500. Come on! Red! I'm asking you red! I don't know what multi is there. Don't be yellow. Don't be yellow. I don't know what multi is there. 250. But could be 75X, which one is next to? So I'm more than half, oh my! Yeah, yeah, yeah! You got it red! Sorry. No, it's not ye, it's no. Let's take it. Leading time is over. I had even more session much worse. First or last one, my fifth last one, alright. Please? I'm asking you really much, please, 15X. Please! Stop, stop, stop! Ladies and gentlemen, he got 15X on fireball! We got it, we got it! Finally! Yes! 3000 only? 3000X! I don't know what multi is there. I don't see. I'm there, who's man, I'm so tired. 450X! Okay, we got 450X! Okay, fine. Alright, here we go, sweeties, of course congratulations! So the beautiful wins in here. 457 amazing wins on this, congratulations! Love it for you! But so remember, you do have to be cautious and responsible with all your personal choices and decisions. No chances of always, well... Chance segments you can find actually on Monopoly Money Wheel, Jane. On Monopoly Money Wheel. This is a wheel has both theme segments and the leaf segments. Sabina, can you spin properly? Oh, I always do! Every single spin is proper and valid because we do have at least one full revolution always. I know, right? So here we go, 5X for the fireball and the hotspot in here. Alright, here we go yet again. We're gonna go for the beautiful and fantastic number 18. Which gonna have fireball and we can also see 5X multiplier from the wheel on it. Let's go for it. Alright, here we go ladies and gentlemen, 5X multiplier. So we're gonna be getting here up to 2500X. Alright, let's go. Good luck sweeties! Alright, and there we go, red segment it is. So for this time ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go for 625X, sweeties! Congratulations! Alright, donnies, congratulations! With this beautiful win on the round. 16000 euros for a top winner on this, congratulations! That's all yours, hi! Good morning everyone, welcome, welcome! Nice to see you guys, hi! So yes, still Sabina? So good. Best of blows, good luck. Yes Homer was playing around a lot. Like in some episodes he's not bad, like in some episodes he is pretty good. But in most of these episodes, he's awful, good luck. 7X on 9, 5X on 1, good luck. I know Squidward from SpongeBob, of course! We are all Squidward. It's number one with the 5X top slots. Alrighty, we do have the 5X, lovely, lovely. And hoping for some global multi players as well. Good luck everyone, let's make that monster! And what do we have here? 5X legs for the torso, woo-hoo! 5X force and 30! Oh my, what is that? What do we have? Ladies and gentlemen, 600X! Woo-hoo, look at that! Beautiful, perfect monster, perfect!
We haven't seen it all for the last two days. Yesterday, we didn't see lightning storm as well. Ah, pass it, that's like the number 19. Whale, leaf. You're going to break it, the wheel? I'll try to be more gentle. Congratulations! To all the players that won. Wow, 423, I didn't tell you that was Kazad. Golden, Akshat, it's on. Actually that wasn't more gentle. 7X on? Hotspot 2X on Monster Mash. Yeah. You something bro? Give me like an advice? Yes! Looks like that spin actually was just perfect. Segment number 14, hotspot with 7X. X Chasers, you participate as well. Let's go! Nice! Some of you will get 700X with a chance of getting 1.4000 if that double goes to that hotspot. We gotta, we gotta connect the wires.
Ken's big, I'm so excited!
There we go. Okay ladies and gentlemen, choose quickly, fast! Come on! Come on! Remember, most of the time today, right side middle area is where the hotspot was. Will it continue like that? No idea. But, it's up to you to choose. I would choose the same area actually, I would pick it. You know, what would I get? Now it's opposite side, but still that area would have given you like 70. It's not that great actually. Ooh, opposite side now, 280X, we have 350s. There's that 700X we're gonna multiply. Nine tiles by two, let's see which tiles we'll multiply. Will it be the right side, will it be the left side? Looks like bottom area with lower multipliers. But at least, those players got more money there. Congratulations to all the players that won again, 700X on the middleish left side of the grid. Congratulations, let's see many of you won? 1316 players won. In the top we have gold, lucky.
1 to 1, Leafy Lethington. 581 winners ladies and gentlemen. Oli, Olen, Jeremy. Jeremy, hi Jeremy! Hello everybody! We have a 7 on the 13, 3X on 5. 5X on 6 and 5X on Lightning Storm, segment 11. Ladies and gentlemen, let's go, Lightning Storm, 5X.
Lightning.
Multiplier. Alrighty, decisions. Not yet, we are applying a 5X. That's how it's done, let's go. Max multiplier. Here 2000, we could double, triple and 5X sets too. Pick your strikes, first one, second or the third one. Let's go to the first one here. That's 250X multiplier. Let's go to the second strike. Alright ladies and gentlemen. 500. Third strike. 175. Once again, the second strike, did it! 500X ladies and gentlemen, congratulations! Compliments to the winners on all the tracks of course.
Don't have much time left for the session though honestly. We'll not be here for too long. Alright, good luck everybody. We got about 10 more minutes, so... 10 more minutes, see if we can cook it up into 10. Next 10. Again, there's only one multiplier, 3X on 17, the battery charger. I mean... That's a pass, but can we get that 18 then? Very slow, but we can, alright, third time the session guys. Lightning Storm number 18. Alright, let's go to the roof again! And of course as usual, a dab for me. Alright, here we go guys. First, second, third strike. That's decision time, first, second, third strike. Okay, bombardillo crocodillo, here we go, strike number one. 500X! Golly! Strike number one popping off. Okay. Strike two, can you match? Not quite, 70X, 70X, alright. There we go. What about strike number th-th-th-three? Double multi, but... 35. Alright, not the greatest, but 570 and 35. Alright! There we go, congrats! Back to the wood, wood, wood. Alright, congratulations to the winners, first strike with a 500 guys. 928 winners. And there it is, we got someone with 11000 euros, top winner. Alright, first strike popped off guys.
Like rewatching another movie yesterday, it was just kinda random, you know? Just what's going on on TV and I was actually watching it. Remember movie called Interview with the Vampire? It's like an old one, it's from the 90s. Alright, 7X, 2X with Brad Pitt, Tom Cruise and some other great actors. Yeah, it's about vampires, it's a cool movie, recommend. Alright. We would also want to see us make it back to the... Okay, it's close, it's gonna be very close. We are very, very close, we are gonna play ladies and gentlemen. Just like that, the Lightning Storm's gonna be back. Follow me guys, let's get on the roof! To the highest place possible! Alright, I don't know if I made it in time, but guys, it's time for the lightning strikes. We are the multi together, Lightning Storm bonus round on its way. At the top, we can see 400X, pretty sweet and the highest multiplier. But don't forget, there's also 2, 3 and 5X global multipliers that can help us out. So, sooner we're gonna start. But I pick the strike 1, 2 or 3, that's totally up to you to decide. Alright, alright, alright. It's already started, the lightning strike number 1, yeah, it's about time we do that. Alright, give us something nice and well, looks like it's altogether 45X. First lightning strike is done, time for the second. Does any one of those get the global multiplier itself? That's what we wanna know. Yeah! There you go, 2, 3, 5X, which one, 2X, okay. Multiply everything that we see there and uh, well, haven't seen the top one being selected for a longest period of time now, so come on! Is there enough to make it to the 800? Whoa! That is a juicy one if I can say that myself. An electrifying 500X, that's the highest one we've seen in session already. Lightning strike number 2 does it perfectly, okay. Let's see about the third one. Third one, so it's only one of the multipliers, which is gonna be 30X. Now, that's a wrap ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
No more bets, so hoping for the best, yeah. Alright, bets are closed everybody. Oh, four wheel multipliers, you got a 3X, 7, 4X, 2, 4X, 13, 7X and a 6, okay. Lowly bro, even break, you can see a smaller, I don't understand. All 15, no, ay yo wheel, ay yo wheel, there you go. Lovely. First one this session, winning number 15. Lightning Storm. Zapri zap baby, let's get it! Yeah, buddy! Lightning Storm baby, time to make that money! Alright, first time, of course, you know the drill and precision. Ladies and gentlemen, you got a big one, that's Lightning Strike. Number 1, number 2, number 3, you don't pick any. If you don't pick any, it's always gonna worry me and hold out this. Alright, we'll see what you got, starting off, lead Lightning Strike number 4. Come on, give us a big one. 30 and a 15, we got 45X on Lightning Strike number 1. Alright, 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 we go! Next! Lightning Strike number 2, got it. Lowly got a multi. You can still get a 400, nope, you're gonna get a 30 and a 15. 45X on Lightning Strike number 2. Alright, last today, we've got last today, Sunshine Lightning Strike number 3. You might get that big free gadget number baby, yes!
You might get that big freak, get your number, baby, yes, sir! 600x on a lightning strike number 3, full money, there you go. Cheers, let's go! We got 892 winners on Lightning Storm, Motte F M E A, Matador 30 on top, well done! Yo, who bet on number 3? Betting time is over, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, 2x in the area there. There's 100x in 50s as well. Lots of chances to get big wins on this one. 1120 winners, Connor, funny x. 450x, top winners. Next spin, everybody, here we go. Let's see what we got. Next spin, good luck. 3x on 1, 3x on 15, 4x on 12, 5x on 9, congratulations. Alright, here it is. No way, no way, 5x on 9? I did it, guys, 5x 9, Lightning Storm. I did it! I did it again, I did it again! Another big multi on Lightning Storm. Multiply all segments by 5x. Here we go. Okay, let's see what we got, pick your strikes, strike 1, strike 2 or strike 3. Strike 1. Okay. Nice purple piece. Outside. Oh, nice, 175x. Okay, strike 2, let's see which strike's gonna be the largest. Probably do better than 175. Boom! There you go. 225 on strike 2, let's see strike 3. Okay, let's see the last strike. Bam, easily the best one is the last strike. With 750x, easy. 1185 winners, top winner, Lucky Man with...
Haps, 20, 40s, 50s, 1, 100 in the middle, so now it's gonna be time to double as well. So let's see, we're gonna be doubling and we are doubling the top part of the world, so... Congratulations, guys, this is the result of the hotspot bonus rounds, amazing! And once again, I'll be seeing you back in a little bit, so see you there. Alright, so 1171, love, bonds, am I wrong? No, I'm not, hello, I'm doing good, how are you doing today? Alright, guys, let's get rolling. And, yeah, I mean, Liz is never wrong, Jeffrey, bets are closed now, good luck. Oh, you know, I, by the way, decided what I'm gonna cook for my parents. We're gonna have, what kind of multis? Uh, 4x on Lightning Storm, 7x on Hotspot, 2x on Fireball. I'm gonna make filled zucchini, zucchini? We call them like those like boats? You just like cut zucchini in half, then you scrape everything out? Oh, yes, 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 segment 17, sorry, Jeffrey, I will continue later. Segment 17, 4x, Lightning Storm with 4x, see you! Bye! Hi, 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 hi! Alright, guys. Wow, 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 let's hope that everybody with a 4x, we have maximum the 1600! So guys, now it's your decision time, you need to decide where do you think the hotspot is at? The hotspots? What? Which, which is gonna be your strike? The lead second by the second strike by 47%. The first one is up as well, let's go! Alright, and additional multipliers! And we gotta double everything, so maximum these 3200! Here we go! Alright, we... Nice, we got 320x multiplier. And now we're gonna go to the second strike. Alright, we got a second strike, we got 1340, my apologies. Alright, third one is up as well. She's gonna be in... What? Look at the numbers! Oh my, it is 1000x! What? Guys, look at that, 1000x! Girl just won 20,000, oh!
Next segment, we had 34 winners there, and enjoy. Next spin, here we go. Let's take a look. Let's see what we got. Maple Leaf. Are you sad? With the leaf's loss? I don't really focus on sports, I didn't really grow up in a very sporty house. 50x on 19. Sports were just never really a big part of my home, so... It was never really part of my blood. Yeah, of course, I can't judge, yeah. Oh, I actually did it! Guys, I did it, 50x on 3, I did it! I did it, yeah! I did it, they said I couldn't do it, look, it's dead, I did it, I did it, yeah! Looks like I'm back! I'm back in action, they said I couldn't do it, and I did it! Bam, 50x Lightning Storm. Strike 1. Let's see, pick your strike, guys, strike 1, strike 2, strike 3, pick your lightning strike. Here we go. Strike 1. Okay. Boom! Nice! 675, strike 2. Here we go. Show me lightning! Boom! Strike 3. Boom! Strike 2 is definitely the best. 450, guys, congrats to the winners! Yeah, that's why I'm Benjewin! That's why they call me Benjewin, guys! Shout out to the players that never gave up on me!
Again, all that, everybody. 576, we're a second down. John has 8, and we went 91. It's horrible. Alright, couple of seconds left, let's go again. Yeah, that was it, that was last time you saw her? Or what was the, well, how did that end? Good luck! Alright, let's take a look, what do we have here? 50x on Battery Charger, small. Stop. Yo, we got it, let's go, 50x on Battery Charger, what? What? I can't, this can't be, this can't be! What? Jazz is free! So let's add the 50x multiplier, 2500x will be the highest. Oh my days, first one, green! No! Okay, red, 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 please be red. Yes, okay, could we double it, could we double it, please, please? Oh my days, oh my days, let's double the fun, ladies and gentlemen, 2000x, highest now. Okay? Please don't do it, don't do it, don't do it. Okay, could we please get a green one now? Please, please, okay. Please be red. Okay. What about 1500x? Ladies and gentlemen, 1500x! On a Battery Charger nonetheless! On a Battery Charger! Wow, congratulations! 1345 winners, Scott, over 6.6 thousand euros, that is crazy! That's crazy, that's crazy. Alright, well, betting time's over, just like yesterday. Alright, good luck, everybody, let's see what's next. Wow. Yeah, it's probably because Yonk has joined the session, that's true. Leave between 2 and 3. 1 to 1, congratulations, come on, help you, come on, stop luck, we wish you best of luck. 175 players, 1,000 total winners, congratulations! Of course, I wish you best of luck, as always. Let's go, guys, let's continue, let's move on. You all need to try to guess what segment's gonna be the winner, the winning. But you know, every single segment's a wonderful segment, isn't it? Spin was made, good luck. 5x on 6, 7x on 15, the multipliers, guys. What about the next one, Lightning Storm number 15? Oh, that's nice, guys, we got a number 6. Monster Mash with 5x. Let's go, first thing, guys, we'll add a 5x and have a buddy hearts. Let's go, let's do it. That Monster Mash, I wish you best of luck. Are you ready? Let's go! Let's see how it's gonna be, guys. Legs, 250. Oh my days, 25 buddy ahead. 6x, boom, legs, 1500, 150 buddy. Oh yeah, we got 1650 on Monster Mash, I love it! It's my man, guys, congratulations! That's so nice! Thousand players won, 62k BT, 7, 28k, 17k for UCTV, congratulations! I wish you best of luck, as always, that was amazing, guys! That wasn't my boyfriend, by the way, you know my man! Okay, it's okay, let's go, let's continue. The real AC BB Alpha, I've been complimenting you about 10 times here, so I miss the food. But now, I'm so, I'm so missing Georgian food, you know? Send me something, send me something tasty! Send me some shawarma, please! Hi, Newcomers, feel free to use X Chaser, Storm Chaser and Vashipos already, good luck! Please, a good multi, good, good, good! There's a 20x on a Battery Charger, 2x on a Hotspot, 2x on a Fireball. What about Hink Ali? Yes, but you know how much I miss Hink Ali? I can't cook... Battery Charger with 20x in it, I'm sorry, I screamed. Battery Charger with 20x in it! Boom, 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 boom! All multi's here, gonna be multiplied on a 20x! Boom! 1000! 500x right now! Let's go, 400x in a way, it's not, move from 16, just move. Yeah, here we go, 300x in a way! That's the Georgian power, at least, it's a Georgian power, 2x doubles, it's a double, doubles! Whoa! 3000x gonna be the highest, 280x, it's not! Let's go, next, 400x, it's not! Like, that's it! It's not 200, 1000, 200x in a way? Nope, nope, it's not, just move from 120x. 3000x in a Battery Charger! Congratulations! Empty, Oli Young, the real.
If this game uses money, so be wise in using your money. Pay attention to the meaning of money. Money is a stock of assets that can be immediately used to carry out transactions. Apart from that, money is anything that can be used or received to make payments for goods, services or debts. Money has one fundamental purpose in the economic system. To facilitate the exchange of goods and services. To shorten the time and effort required to execute a trade. Money is an object that can be approved by all levels of society. As a means of exchange in trade. The definition of money is an acceptable medium. Used by every economic actor or money market player to make transactions easier.